All right, at 9:32, we will open up the workshop on the 22nd day of January, at Central County Commission Court. I've brought you show Larry Holtz, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Ford are all present. And I'm not for sure who's going to be presenting first. Is it Kelly, Warren, Brian, somebody from Austin? Y'all tell me. What are we gonna do? If you want Kelly, you can, if you'll turn that microphone on. If the little red light is on, then it should be on.
Okay, so I'm ready.
You're ready.
Thank you, Brian. For those of you who don't know, we started a countywide B&amp;B Association. And through that, the county B&amp;Bs have been asking some questions about the county hot tax and how it's being used. And so, it was suggested that we do a workshop on state hot taxes, how it's supposed to be used and all that stuff. So, I did try and contact Scott Josslove with THLA, and I was never able to get in touch with him. It was kind of short notice. So, Danny had asked me to go ahead and present a hot tax workshop, basically. So, in the packet, let's see here. Okay, who pays hot taxes? And this is kind of information for everybody. Hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, cabin rentals, vacation home rentals, lodges, Airbnbs. Airbnbs didn't, used to pay hot tax. And finally, in 2017, it was made where Airbnb's are required to pay hot tax. So, any company, any lodging that goes through an Airbnb, their hot tax is automatically taken out of the reservation and paid to the state. So, that's one good step towards that. There's still some other ones like VRBOs and stuff that kind of get away with renting without having to pay hot tax. But, we're moving in a forward direction, thank goodness. Who does not pay hot tax is RVs and campsites. If there's an RV, there's no hot tax added to RV sites. There's no hot tax added to campsites. Who's exempt from paying hot tax? There are several people who are exempt from it. Would be federal employees, traveling on official business, diplomats, foreign diplomats. They should have a tax exempt card issued by the US State Department. High-ranking state officials, which is a very limited number of state officials with the hotel tax exemption card. That would be heads of state, state legislators, and legislative staff, members of state boards, and commissions, and state judges. But, they also should also have a tax exempt card, you know, to show the lodging that they are exempt. Permanent residents, which this, we have this happen here in this county because we have our outages. And anyone who stays in a hotel lodging for more than 30 days is tax exempt. Banquet or meeting rooms in hotels, they are not exempt from paying, or they are exempt from paying hotel tax. Organizations with a letter of tax exemptions. There are some religious organizations that have a tax exemption for their particular organization. Not all of them, and they would need to show that in order to get the tax exemption. Who's not exempt from local hot tax is city and county employees and officials, rank-and-file state employees, tourists, charitable organizations, Texas educational organizations, religious organizations, without letters of exemption. Because we talked on the previous slide, there are some that do have letters of exemption. And regional educational service centers without letters of exemption. The enforcement authority of the county or city for those who do not pay their hot tax. I know there are some people delinquent in their hot tax. It is up to the city or the county in order to make sure that those monies get collected. The authority to take the action on the hotel who's been delinquent for at least one complete fiscal quarter. So, they have to be delinquent at least one full, complete fiscal quarter. Interest may begin accruing from the first day after the tax is due. Hotels could also be charged to pay the cost of the audit costs. Interest can be charged on the amount past due. It can require a forfeiture of any revenue allowed to the hotel operator to retain for its cost of collecting tax. City and county can bring a civil suit against the hotel operator for non-compliance. And the city or county can ask the district court to enjoin operation of the hotel until the report is filed and the tax is paid. So, those are some of the procedures and authority that we have as governmental entities to try and collect that hot tax.
Kelly, do you know if hotel is inclusive of bed and breakfast?
Yes. Any of the ones that are, pay hot tax, that would be bed and breakfast, lodging. So, that's why, you know, I brought it to your attention as well. Because I know on one report that I saw, there were some that were delinquent and stuff. So, something you kind of have to stay on top of. The use of local hot tax revenues. There are two criteria to be able to use local hot tax. The first one is criteria one. Every expenditure must directly enhance and promote tourism and convention and hotel industry. So, under criteria one, under the tax code, every event, program, or facility funded with hot revenue must be likely to do two things. Directly promote tourism, or directly promote the convention and hotel industry. Tourism is defined under the Texas law as guiding or managing individuals who are traveling to a different city, county, state, or country. A direct promotion of the convention and hotel industry has been consistently interpreted, interpreted, excuse me, by the Texas Attorney General's Office as a program, event, or facility likely to cause increased hotel or convention activity. So, in order for hotel tax to be dispersed, it has to follow under one of those two things under criteria one. Then, under criteria two, is every expenditure of the hotel occupancy tax must clearly fit into one of the nine statutorily provided categories for expenditure of local hotel occupancy tax revenues. So, the first one being funding the establishment improvement or maintenance of a convention center or visitor information center, which is how the city runs. Hot tax is what funds the city convention and visitors bureau. So, that's one example that we fall under criteria two. Paying the administrative costs for facilitating convention registration. Some of you have been to the big conventions. There's all kinds of people there registering people, and getting the rooms set up and all that stuff. That's what they're talking about as far as paying the administrative costs for facilitating a convention registration. Paying for advertising, solicitation, and promotions that attract tourists and convention delegates to the city or its vicinity. Expenditure to promote the arts. Funding historical restoration or preservation programs. Funding certain expenses, including promotional expenses directly relating to a sporting event within counties with a population of under 1 million. There are different guidelines for cities over 1 million, cities over 3 million, and stuff. So, we fall under the 1 million, even though they're quite small on that list. Let's see. Funding the enhancement or upgrading of existing sports facilities or sports fields for certain municipalities. Funding transportation systems for tourists, and signage directing tourists to sites and attractions that are visited frequently by hotel guests in the area. So, for any hotel tax money to be expended, it has to fall under one item in criteria one, and at least one item in criteria two. We're gonna go over a little bit more in depth about each of the nine categories. The first one is funding the establishment improvement or maintenance of a convention center or visitor information center. The category allows expenditures for the creation, improvement, or upkeep of a convention center or a visitor information center. Convention center is defined to include civic centers, auditoriums, exhibition halls, and coliseums that are owned by a government entity. It also includes parking areas in the immediate vicinity or convention center facility. Texas law specifies that for a facility to be funded as a convention center, it must be a facility primarily used to host conventions and meetings. Primarily used in the context would arguably mean that more than 50% of the bookings for the facility are to host conventions and meetings that directly promote tourism and hotel stays. Everybody understand that one? I just want to make sure y'all get a chance to ask questions in between. Okay, paying the administrative costs for facilitating convention registration. This provision allows expenditures for administrative costs that are actually incurred for assisting registration of convention delegates and attendees. Paying for the advertising, solicitations, and promotions that attract tourists. This provision allows expenditures for solicitation of promotional programs, advertising directly related to attracting tourists and convention delegates to the city and vicinity. Such expenditures are traditionally in the form of internet, such as, we do social media, Facebook, websites, all that type of stuff. Newspaper, which is not as big anymore as it used to. And the mail, a lot of people do mail-outs or emails. Hold on, something just popped up in front of my screen here. Let's see. Most, duh-duh-duh-duh. Oh, I think I went-
Did you skip ahead one?
I skipped ahead one, thank you. I was like, what happened here? Radio, which, you know, we do radio ads on Hank FM, KOME. I think we do some in some other areas, too. So, radio ads is a big one. Television, we actually have been able to have television here. We've been on the Day Tripper. We've been on Ride TV for the Cowgirls TV show. And so, there's been several ways y'all have been on TV, Fossil Rim. So, we've been really working on that one more than most cities our size. There was a grant done for the Cowgirls Ride TV. Was really a cheap grant considering we got all these commercials for free, and we have a whole episode on just Glen Rose. The Day Tripper, it was not paid for. I think Best Western hosted them for a hotel room, but they did all the other things. We've been really lucky. And at this last Saddle Brunk riding that we had with the Ride TV and Cowgirls, there was actually another movie that they were doing scenes from at that particular rodeo. And they will be doing that again this year with a different movie to take scenes. So, I know in the clips that we got this year from the Ride TV, it's got the convention and visitors bureau sign on there. It's got the city council sign on there. It's got some of our business signs that are showing through the, you know, movie sets and stuff. So, those have been going real, really good. Solicitations to promote an event or facility. So, the advertising promotion must directly promote the hotel and convention center, or convention industry. So, by that, you know, people were coming in, purchasing hotels or rooms and stuff for those particular events. The TV program, the TV crew, the people who were riding in the event. And so, that was an example of a good one. Expenditures that promote the arts. A lot of people forget about this one, but on this one, they actually have a percentage of your entire budget that should be dedicated just to the arts. And that's 1/7 of your total budget that's supposed to go towards the arts. It allows funding to the encouragement, promotion, improvement, and the application of the arts. And this includes instrumental in vocal music, dance, drama, folk art, creative writing, architecture, design, and allied fields, painting, sculpture, photography, graphic, and craft arts, motion pictures, radio, television, tape, and sound recording, and other arts relating to the presentation or performance execution, and the exhibition of the arts. So, we already have a lot of those, you know, in the arts. I mean, Bluegrass Festival is a musical art. Dulcimer Festival is a musical art through Bernard's Mill. They have Art on the Plexi. We also have, of course, we just mentioned motion pictures, or radio, television, tape, and sound recording. I had, I did pay for Brian Doty to do a little video of the National Day of the Cowboy that we can use as a promotional video about that. So, that's another, you know, form of the arts that he's doing that we can promote. But, like I said, there are special rules on those expenditures for an area our size that at least 1/7 of the entire budget should be used for advertising, promoting the city and its vicinity to attract tourists and hotel and convention activities. So, 1/7 of that, your entire budget is supposed to be used for something with the arts. Funding historical restoration or preservation program. There should be another area set aside for that. They do not have a limit on that, or maximum on this particular category as they do on the arts. A portion of the hot funds may be spent to enhance historical restoration and preservation projects or activities, or advertising, conducting solicitations, and promotional programs to encourage tourists and convention delegates to visit the preserved historic sites, or museums that are likely to attract tourists and hotel guests. So, one of the things that I promote when I'm out is that we've got 30 buildings on the National Historic Registry of Historic Places in our downtown area, as well as Bernard's Mill, which is the founding building of our city. And there's a lot of people out there that are wanting to see the history. A lot of people interested in In on the River because of its historical value and the stories that come from that, and so forth. So, you know, that's one of the things that can be used. Texas law does not limit such fundings to structures that are owned by a public or nonprofit entity, or to whether the project is listed on the Historic Registry. But, the county or city may choose to impose those limitations. So, it would be up to you, you know, if you want to say, okay, well, out of our budget, max budget, you know, we'll do 1/5 of that towards historical restoration. Any questions on that one? So, like, it would be something like the county could use to preserve the jail and make it a tourist attraction as well. Funding certain expenses, including promotional expenses, directly relating to a sporting event within the counties with a population of under 1 million. Go on, I'll go through this, but we don't typically have anything that qualifies so much for this particular area. Well, the golf course, yes. To qualify under this authorization, a sporting event must be one that would substantially increase the economic activity at hotels and motels within the vicinity. And I know at least one or two of the B&amp;Bs, Brazos House Retreat gets a lot of business off the golf course and golfers that come in from that. The statutory authorization also requires that a majority of the participants of the sporting event be tourists to the vicinity. The requirement that a majority of the participants must be tourists is included in the statutory authority to prohibit the use of local hotel tax for sporting-related events or events that are purely local. So, you know, the golf course does the Big Freeze, and the Hotter Than Hell Tour, I don't remember what the name of it is, but those bring in people from out of our area to play in. They know when those times are, they come in during those times to play. Funding the enhancement or upgrading of existing sports facilities or sports fields for certain municipalities. We don't, that's not part of us, we don't own any baseball fields or soccer. Well, y'all have the soccer field, so that would be something that could be used for upgrading these facilities. However, when you do that, it has to be something where you're having tournaments that are bringing in people from other cities and other, you know, states that would stay here and be a tourist.
So, the golf course wouldn't be a sports field?
No. When they're talking about sports field, they're talking about baseball, soccer, that type of stuff. But, the golf course is definitely, on the other sporting ends, I mean, it does bring in tourists. I have another one that's coming in where I think they're all Israeli. And so, they're definitely tourists to this area, you know? So, they will be looking to stay at places and stuff like that. Yes?
Can we talk about that later?
Okay. We'll talk about that later. Funding transportation systems for tourists. I thought this was very interesting. Often with conventions and large meetings, as you know, for those of you who've been to them, they'll have some type of shuttle transportation to get you from the hotel to the venue, or from the hotel to a tourist site that they're gonna, you know, show you hospitality. In 2007, the Texas Legislature authorized the use of hotel tax for any size city, county, to cover costs for transporting tourists from our hotels to and near the city, or to any other following destination, such as commercial city center, we want to bring them downtown to give them a historical tour, let them shop, the convention center, which we don't have, other hotels in or near the city, tourist attractions in or near the city. The reimbursed transportation system must be owned and operated by the city or county, or privately owned and operated but financed in part by the city or county. The law specifically prohibits the use of hotel tax to cover the costs for a transportation system that serves the general public. So, we could, you know, I know the city, and I believe the county both give money to our transportation system. So, that might be an avenue that we might be able to use, because it would only be able to be used for like conventions, you know, meetings and stuff. It's not, it's not a transportation service where a visitor at the hotel or tourist calls and says, hey, can you take me out to Dinosaur Valley or Fossil Rim? But, in my experience, that would be something really good, you know, to have when we have these things, if we do have our own transportation to get people from one place to the other. Okay?
Can they charter?
We, yes, the company that's bringing in the meeting, conference, event, whatever, they can charter it themselves.
But, I mean, could the county-
If we had a transportation service that was available to do it, we could, yes.
For the county, the county that tells, hey, it has to be operated for-
Yeah, it has to be operated by the city or county.
What about the transportation?
Well, that's something we'd have to work on, because I think right now, it's just for the elderly.
It says, but partly owned, but financed in part. Does that mean financed in part forever, or financed in part wherever?
This is talking about the city and county, you know? What they can do as financing, because we do finance in part the transportation, what is that called?
Transit.
Transit, thank you. It's like, you know, we do, each of us donate so much to the transit company, but it's typically used for the elderly to get them to doctor's offices, or groceries, or that type of stuff. So, it's not a usage that they've been used to doing. And it would probably cost a little bit more for the county or city to get them to do something, you know, because most of these are evenings or during the week and stuff. So, but, you know, it is a possibility, but it would certainly help in bringing in more stuff, more events to the city, that would like to send our tourists out to tourist destinations, or to the golf course, or downtown shopping, and stuff like that.
Well, I was thinking about that. School conference is coming in 2019, and-
Now, she's talking about using the school buses through the school, which, it's a school event, and-
It was a statewide-
It is a statewide event, but the school is willing to offer, you know, the buses, and I don't know what charge she's worked out with them, but, you know. And I know the school district does help out from time to time with, you know, allowing people to have a bus, you know, to get to and from, something like that. You know, I also, when I was at a conference, was given a website for getting shuttles, you know, and so I can go on and find out what the price is, so if a company's wanting to come in and do an event or something, I can at least give them, a company to schedule, you know, shuttles with them, you know, if we don't have anything available for them. Typically with conferences and stuff, you know, that's kind of all part of the package, you know, they're renting the facility, you know? Yes, John?
I don't know if anybody's ever approached the transit authority specifically for this type of service.
And I think it would be a good idea, at least approach them, you know, and let them know.
We might inquire to see if they even offer that for a price.
Yeah. And of course, there would be a price, but, you know, it'd be a lot nicer if it was right here, local, and, you know, so, and it would give them more money, because the event would pay them, you know, a certain amount to use their shuttle service. So, that's something to consider is, you know, getting with them and kind of proposing what could happen. So, are there any other questions on the transportation? I just think this is a good opportunity. Yes, sir?
I do have a question. Marge, we're talking about this transportation. Going through your mind, would you see this as going to your facility and picking these guests up?
The meeting, the big meeting that's been held here in next year.
Through the school?
Through the school.
No, this is it?
Oh, you mean otherwise?
Right.
No, no. Just if we had a special, you know, facility for that event, and they had to be at the center by.
Yeah. Because one thing the school was looking at and talking to the B&amp;B Association was, so if, if members of the-
I'm trying to get away from the school thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Trying to look at this as a potential-
No, for just general people staying at our facility.
And it would not be for general people. It would have to be a group that's an event, or a program, or something, that their members that come in for that event, that's when they would get transportation to the tourists or to their hotels and stuff. Not general public. Yeah, so like if Best Western had a group of tourists come in that just came in because they heard about Glen Rose, wanted to come see it, we couldn't call the transportation company and ask them to come and take them around, because it's not a program or an event.
I got you.
Anything else? Okay. Signage, directing tourists to sites and attractions that are visited frequently by hotel guests in the area. In 2009, the Texas Legislature added a statutory category that allows county cities to use municipal hot revenue to pay for signage directing tourists to sites and attractions frequently visited by hotel guests. This subject's been going on since I got to the city, about putting up signage. Several cities that I know has signage, it's like the, like T-posts that, you know, this one marks to Fossil Rim, and this sign goes this way to Dinosaur Valley, and Dinosaur World, and Creation Evidence Museum, and this one goes to Downtown, Historic Downtown, and all that stuff. We don't typically have that. I did put up the billboard to try and get people to turn left at Tiger Corner to come downtown, you know, and there's Big Rocks Park, and Historic, but, you know, a lot of tourist cities, which is, that's exactly what we are, we are a tourist city, you know, they have markers that tell people how to get to all your major attractions and sites. So, this is another thing that, you know, the money could be used for, is signage. Yes?
What are the little brown signs that you see on the highway?
The brown signs are state attraction markers.
Okay, so-
So, like Dinosaur Valley State Park has a brown sign that says, turn right.
But, I always see that one in Eret County, to Highway Ranch, how did they get a brown sign?
They probably petitioned the state to, you know, get a sign out there. Because they're kind of a tourist attraction as well, with the little old western town, and they do the chuck wagon dinners and stuff like that. So, but, they had to petition the state in order to get that, because those are state signs. So, and I don't know what the cost is of that, we could find out, but, yeah, the brown signs tend to mean that it's a state attraction directional sign. It's not anything that city or county, and I don't think y'all pay for that, right?
Isn't there one for Historical District for Glen Rose? I thought there was. I think they were at the border for Bernard's Mill.
Yeah.
2007, it was like downtown.
Yeah.
That's a state sign.
Right. So, there are some of those. I put the billboard up just so, because it's bigger, and more people can see the red arrow saying, you know, turn left, than the brown signs, you know? So, are there any other questions or comments on signage? I don't know how many of you travel, but I know when I travel, it's a lot easier when I see the signs that say, you know, convention center that way, you know, or Historical District that way. Okay, so that, I don't think we need to go through the summary unless y'all just want to, on the nine uses for hot tax. I think we pretty much went over each one, and what it can be used for. Okay, administering hot revenue expenditures. The duty of the funded entity to provide a list of activity. So, all entities that are directly or indirectly funded by the hot tax are annually required to provide a list of scheduled activities, programs, or events that will directly enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. The list is to be provided annually. It does not apply if the entity already provides written information indicating which scheduled activity or events that it offers that directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry. This year, the state is now requiring anyone who receives hot tax money to send in a report. They either want to know if you have it posted on your website of how you've spent the hot tax money, and they can just go to the website and look at it, or you send in an annual report of all the expenditures of the hot tax, and how you used it, and all that stuff. So, they're really getting down to transparency on what we're spending in the county, any hot tax money. I'm working on my report to get that turned in. Believe it's due in by February 20th. So, it's kind of a long, detailed report that you have to turn in at least annually, or have it on your website that you update regularly. So, that's something new that's going on with the state wanting to be more transparent. Delegating management of fund activities. Okay, the governing body may delegate the management or supervision of programs funded by hot revenues by a written contract. This delegation may be made to a person, another government entity, or to a private organization. The delegation is often made to a local arts council, chamber of commerce, or to the convention and visitors bureau. Municipality shall approve the entity's annual budget prior to delegating the management or supervision of the hot revenues funded projects. Furthermore, the municipality shall require the delegated entity to make periodic reports at least quarterly, listing the hot expenditures made by the delegated entity. Code requires that the contracted entity maintain complete and accurate financial records for every expenditure of hot revenue, and upon request, make records available for inspection and review. The entity with the delegated authority to- entity with the delegated authority to manage hot revenues undertakes the fiduciary duty with respect to the use of the tax revenue. Such entities are also required to maintain the hot revenue in a separate bank account and not commingled with any other account or funds. So it is within your right to actually delegate that money to someone who will do the monthly reporting, quarterly reporting of how those expenses are being done. Like I said, you can delegate a person, you can delegate the chamber or the C V B or an arts council to be responsible for that money and make sure they report it and that they give you a budget on how they're planning on spending that type of money. Or, you know, as you're doing it right now, the golf course or the expo, we need to turn in quarterly at least a detailed expenditures of the hot tax money. Okay. So it tells you exactly what it was spent on and stuff? Because that's what they want to know, because they want to make sure it's not being spent on awards for an event or, you know, trophies or anything like that, because that's not part of the nine criteria. So as long as you have that, you know, but they, just, the way the state's going right now with the hot taxes, they're really starting to crack down on wanting to see what this money is being spent on. That's why they're having us do this annual report. That's why they want to be able to get on your website and check and see how it's being spent, you know, or come in and check. And that's, the last part of this is that they can come in and check at any time and want to pull those records and see what it's been spent on. So that's the delegating management of the fund activities. So, you know, as long as y'all have someone who's managing it and can fulfill those reports at a moment's notice, then you should be good. Yusef, go ahead, John.
In our meeting at the Endel McRiver, there was discussion about an individual
Yes.
potentially managing that money, but that would be too different because we have we use some of that money and we manage the reporting and things of that nature.
There are other entities, counties and cities that delegate a certain amount to one person and delegate another amount. You know, some of them do a certain percentage to the chamber or a certain percentage to this person. So, so you should be under compliance.
Well, in order to have to keep records, you might as well let someone else involved or not.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll have to discuss that because if you give funding to that individual, if you designate an individual, then that becomes a responsibility of that individual to keep up with those records of expenditures, correct?
And they would
Right, they would have to turn them back into the entity who's providing the funds. Anything else? Questions? Okay. The use of hot revenues to cover administrative expenses. Texas law allows proceeds of the hot to be used to cover a portion of administrative costs that are directly attributable to work on activities that may be funded by the tax. For example, entities that manage activities funded by hot may include supplies, salaries, office rental, tribal expenses, and other administrative costs. The portion of the administrative costs that are covered should not exceed the percentage of the cost that is attributable to activity funded by the hot. Hot revenues may be spent on travel that is directly related to the performance of the person's job in an efficient and professional manner. This travel should facilitate the acquisition of skills and knowledge that will promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. So that's how we are run, since we're solely run by hot tax. It pays our administrative costs, room and board, basically, office supplies, my travel and training. Now, that doesn't mean if y'all do decide to have a portion of your hot tax go to a single person, that it should cover, you know, their administrative forces or, you know, anything like that. And just to tell you, you know, most people who have hot tax, and I didn't find it in the state thing, but it's usually best to have a type of advisory board. I have an advisory board who meets monthly in order to approve the grants and work on budgets and marketing ideas. That way, it's not me just making all the decisions. It's people in the community that this affects. So like I have hoteliers, I have attractions, I have, who else on my board? Downtown businesses, you know, that type of stuff. So that, I'm not making the decisions. I'm presenting them what's come in that's asking for funding, you know, we're working with them on, you know, marketing ideas and how to do, you know, better with that. It's a public meeting, but it takes the pressure off of me. So people can't say I'm going around deciding how to spend the money and who to give it to. One of the things that we use our money on to promote, you know, tourism and the hotel and lodging is the magazine which advertises the entire county, all of our lodging, our attractions, our restaurants, our shopping, and anything else that they would know about, want to know about the county. We also have a free downloadable app which also lets people know about all we have to offer, and that's free. We travel shows to promote all that we have. We put advertisements in many of the tourist magazines, Texas Monthly, Texas Highways, Drive Guide, Travel Host, and all that kind of stuff. So we're set up to work the way that they've trained us as C V Bs to work. Are there any questions on that? Just wanted to let y'all know how we kind of run. Somerville County Glen Rose B and B Cabin and Vacation Rentals Association. We've put all of those in there to try and cover it like John you were asking, you know, is, does a B and B pay or, you know, any of that stuff? So we've got all of those listed. And the B and B Association would like to have full disclosure on how the county hot tax revenues are being spent. And this is one reason why we're having this meeting because they are the ones that provide the money. You know, we, we try to bring in all the tourism and let them know that they're, you know, part of our tagline, explore Glen Rose, is to make people want to come here and get down in and explore, not just come visit, get in here, dig in, do an experiential, you know, stay here at one of our interesting B and Bs and, you know, spend some time here and see what all we have. So we kind of want to know how is it bringing tourism to the B and Bs according to the hot regulations, you know, to the lodging? What has it been spent on are some of the questions they're asking. And then there's some suggestions, and I'm gonna let Warren talk about some of these, you know, in a minute, about, we've met and kind of got together and decided how we think maybe some of the hot tax should be spent in order to further promote tourism and hotel and lodging in the county. So some of them were billboards, airport advertising, large festivals with booths, flyers, different shows, bring in travel writers, magazine ads, I just got another list, increased use of county facilities, i.e. the expo to promote events that would bring more tourism to the county and city, appoint a county hot revenue expenditure advisory board to assure most cost-effective use and legal compliance with the use of the monies. And I'm gonna go ahead and have Warren come up and talk about some of the things that he's
Could I ask you
Yes, sure.
The 50% of the money up here, it says that on convention, on convention center, you can spend, you have to have at least 50% of a convention?
Yeah, the meetings, to be considered a convention center, the activities in that convention center has to be at least 50% of conventions or meetings.
What do you mean meetings?
It could be like, because some of them aren't considered a convention, but it may be like a regional meeting for American Airlines. And they come in and take up the whole banquet hall, you know, and have a meeting for the day. I know some of y'all have gone to some meetings that were like a day long or something, but that would be considered a meeting. It's something that's bringing people in from out of town.
So it'd have to be some type of convention?
Some type of convention, whether it be one-day meeting that's bringing people from out of town, you know, that might stay an extra night to see what all we have, or an actual convention. And we haven't necessarily been able to use the expo center because in most conventions, they want the big room, which we've got, but they need breakout rooms, you know, to break into their different groups and stuff. So that would be great if we could fix that. And we want to bring in a lot more conventions and meetings. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Is there anything else before I let Warren come up?
With the city, on their hot tax?
Yes.
Do they send, so they send it to you? Is that 100%?
Uh-huh.
So 100% goes to the C V B?
Yes. And that does all of our promotions, advertising, travel, training, admin costs, supplies, subscriptions, you know, to different organizations that do the training or, you know, that type of stuff.
Also, you said 1/7 of the budget. Is that your budget and ours or combined?
It's any, any entity that collects hot tax.
So it'd be two, two separate entities?
Two separate entities, yes. So, you know, if it was all, if we were all combined in one, then it would just be 1/7 of the total of the county and city. But since y'all have your own, it's 1/7 of yours and it's 1/7 of mine.
You're saying 1/7 of
It's 1/7.
the hot tax that's collected?
Yeah, 1/7 of the total hot tax that's collected must go to the arts. They don't have that requirement for any of the other, you know, sections of it but the arts. Okay, Warren, you want to come up and talk about?
Kelly, great job, and I'm glad you're here. You're doing a lot of really good things for Glen Rose, so thank you for that. I met with Brian a few weeks ago, and we talked about allocating some funds to promote the B and Bs of Glen Rose, which we happen to be one of them as well with our lodging and cabins. And the benefit of that is we do get discounted rates. We do, our budget's pretty big and we spend based on a nonprofit. And I've talked to several vendors and they're happy to pass that along to the county as well. So I've offered that up and I'm happy to do it. And at any point in time where a decision is that we, you don't want us to do it, we're happy to not do it. So I think that, you know, for instance, the airport, it's about 4,600 a month to run a television ad there. We pay about 15. So we have some pretty good relationships with folks that actually support what we do. And I've talked to them about possibly creating a television ad for the B and Bs of Glen Rose. And I'd be happy to give sporadic months. We can do havesies on it, but it would give us an opportunity to promote the B and Bs in Glen Rose. We actually, at Fossil Rim, we have the ability to create commercials, so we'd be happy to offer that up as well. I met with the B and B group a couple of weeks ago, maybe a week ago. I lose track of time, but we've talked about several things. I don't want to make all the decisions. I don't want to make any of the decisions, quite frankly, on where the money gets spent, but I'll bring it up to the group. And if they feel that that would support bringing tourism in to the B and Bs, I'm happy to negotiate those rates. One thing that we did decide was if there's a B and B brochure that needs to be printed, that money could be used for that, to print it. And then the distribution of that brochure can happen in many different venues. They could be mailed out with the C V B, and Kelly's happy to put that in the collateral material when she sends that out. We've talked about May Fest coming up in May in Fort Worth, setting up a booth there, and distributing information about the B and Bs of Glen Rose and maybe printing some T-shirts that talk about B and Bs of Glen Rose. So we have an opportunity to further those dollars just through Fossil Rim, and we're happy to do it. I've talked to our CFO. We'll provide an invoice with the detail on it. You'll pay us for it and we'll in turn write the check to the venue. If all of that protocol is fine, everybody's good with it, we're happy to do it. Sort of is our way of giving back to the community. The Plexi Pedal, I'm meeting with them tonight. I know that they stay at a lot of hotels, but I'm wondering if, you know, maybe we should put something out to the Plexi Pedal folks to encourage them to maybe stay at some of the B and Bs in town. So I've also talked to the Spartan Race folks. We're gonna be a sponsor. We're gonna be tied to four of their races in Houston, Austin, and Dallas. And we'll be able to set up and provide information not only for Fossil Rim but the B and Bs in Glen Rose as well. The last one happens to be in Glen Rose. Out of all four, a lot of these athletes participate in all of them. So it'll give us an opportunity to see the visit prior to them coming through the Austin, the Houston, and the Dallas Stadium event. So from my perspective, if we can offer up that, we're happy to do it. There's some administrative costs to us, but we're just gonna, we're not gonna worry about that at all. We'll basically do a straight-up negotiation for the television outdoor or whatever it is we're doing. So prior to me, engaging and signing a contract, I want to put it before the B and B group and let them know what we're doing. And if they're fine with it, I'll then take action on it. So that's what we're offering up. And so far, it looks like we're gonna go forward. And if you have any questions about that, let me know. Okay. All right. That it? Did I miss anything, Kelly? Okay, all right. Well, once again, Kelly, thanks for doing a great job. Thank you for all the support.
Thank you, Warren.
And it's great to see the city and the county. This is some positive stuff happening. So I'm excited about it. Thanks.
Oh, I don't need to stand up. I mean, I can stand up. Well, as most of you know, the only reason that we kind of got involved in this was, well, because we collect the taxes and pay them to the county, number one. And we were surprised at how they were not being accounted for. That was our main, our main reason for getting involved. But the, the real reason that we wanted to have this meeting was to promote or encourage cooperation between the county and the city so that this small amount in the county budget, which, I mean, it is a small amount compared to everything else, but it has all these guidelines that require you to spend it the correct way. There doesn't need to be overlapping use efforts for the money. I mean, we are this tiny little county, and everything is very intertwined here. And I understand that you have your priorities with what you want to do with the money, the county does. I understand that they promote the golf course, and I, we don't see any issue with that at all. You promote the expo center or give the H O T revenue to the expo center. And if that's used appropriately, we have no issues with that at all. But there's a large fund balance left over from prior years. And I think this past year, the revenue was much more than you had budgeted for. Brian, do you remember what the total?
It was around 40. He was 1, 42.
And I think you had budgeted 30. So this fund balance over the years has just collected. So there's a big chunk of money left in addition to increased revenue every year. And we would just encourage cooperation with the, the city of Glen Rose. I know that there's all kinds of other issues, trash and roads and parks and soccer fields and everything else. But this money in particular, we feel like could be better utilized in one lump. Now, whether you want to have county representatives on the C V B, the city C V B advisory board, or whether you want to retain a certain amount of the revenue to give directly to the golf course or directly to the expo center, that's fine. But there, it seems like the county could support this effort because honestly, from our standpoint as a hospitality venue owner in the county, most, all of our calls and revenue, our calls and reservations come off of the Glen Rose C V B accommodation website. And that's a fact. So that's, that's why we're involved. We just want best use of the money and no need to reinvent the wheel. Kelly seems to have a good handle on how to manage that money and spend it most effectively. And I don't believe there's anybody at the county that has that either time or expertise to do that. Anybody have a question for me?
I agree.
Well, and like I said, this was just a workshop, just to kind of do an overview of the hot tax and give y'all the rules and regulations. of the hot tax and give y'all the rules and regulations. I have quite a few people that always ask me, who do I work for? And I tell them, I'm Switzerland, because my job is to promote tourism throughout our entire county, you know, I mean, we wouldn't have tourism if it wasn't for Fossil Rim, you know, that's out in the county, or Dinosaur Valley State Park out in the county, or Dinosaur World, or Creation Evidence Museum, or the golf course, you know? So tourism is about all, everything that we have to offer, you know, and that's what my job is. I can't, you know, if I was just to go and promote Glen Rose City Limits, not gonna be a whole lot
You wouldn't have money.
That, you know, is gonna bring people here for very long, and my goal is to not, when I first started this, the slogan was, "Come and spend a day in Glen Rose." I don't want them to spend a day, I want them to know that there, you could spend a whole week here and still not see everything, especially if you go to our surrounding cities and stuff. So that's been my goal, is to change that attitude, to come and spend a day, to come and spend a long time with us, because there's so much to explore here. So I will leave on that note, and thank you for allowing this discussion, and if there's any other discussion, please continue, but I will stop at this point. Anybody else out here have a question? Okay?
I'd like to hear the commissioner's viewpoint.
Commissioner's viewpoint. Be nice to me, please.
Well, at some point in history, the commissioners' court voted to impose a hot tax for this purpose, okay? And if we're gonna continue with that tax, then it should be utilized for the purpose it was intended to be used for, and that is promoting, to bring tourists into this town. We do not, in my opinion, I do not think we need to retain a reserve of this magnitude in our coffer. That should be utilized almost to depletion on an annual basis, unless we identify something that we're, need to implement and, and need to put some money behind, beside, to build up to purchase this. So I'm of the opinion that if we're gonna continue with the hot tax, then it should be utilized, and I think the group is offering a solution for utilization, or the best utilization of those dollars, and we should consider that going forward.
We've put an awful lot on you, Brian, but is February the 12th too tight? If you were to just give us an example, say, hey, this money goes here, this money goes here, this money goes to Warren to help facilitate what he needs to do, just sort of break it down, and then whatever we're discussing to do at the expo, things like that?
Sure.
And then we can just discuss our options, how we want to divvy it up, spend it, and then start getting it out there, and then once we get it going, the year after year will be easy after that, it's just the initial setup and getting it divided.
Sure, not, not a problem. I have, you know, we had to do kind of a two-stage
Right.
Because we have this year's budget.
Right.
And then, you know, if we were to, to want to change or reopen that budget, we would have to, quote, declare an emergency, and I'm not sure this
No.
You know, rises to that occasion. But we definitely can change it for fiscal year 19, and what we do is we just simply do a deficit budget for that fund, to basically spend more than I anticipated revenues to spend up that reserve. You know, the, the reason I sat with Warren was, at the initial conversation I think we had at the commissioners' court, you know, he had talked about already working through some, some preferred pricing or discounts, and of course, that raised my ears, and, you know, and then looking at it, you know, of that $40,000, $41,000 collected, 28 actually came from Fossil Rim. So it, you know, I felt like, okay, you know, here's the, you know, here's the largest provider of that, needed to kind of visit with him too, and he's already got an advertising program running, so let's see what we can do to piggyback on that. You know, like you said, let's alternate some television ads, do some joint things with like Mayfest. You know, we talked about even the possibility of sending D U F up to the Mayfest booth to talk about the, you know, maybe give some free clinics to kids, or whatever, I mean, there's, there's so many things that we could do and be, you know, real creative there. You know, and, you know, as far as using the excess, you know, it's, you know, there's no requirement for an advisory board, I know that Kelly has an advisory board, I applaud that, you know, the local government code and the tax code puts it squarely on the commissioners' court for a county imposed tax, hot tax. So, you know, having, having certain parts set aside for expo, having certain parts set aside for the golf course, and then using something else for some joint, I think is totally doable and appropriate.
Kelly, the county contract with the C V B could administer use these spots, correct?
Yes. Well, the same way they could do it with Warren as well.
I believe this court's willing to work with everyone to where we all be satisfied.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I feel that, we, we've worked with Kelly, we tried to work with all the county B and Bs as well as anything. The statement made today is the county work with the city. That's not happening, and everybody needs to know that. The city council is not working with the county like they should. We do work with Kelly, because she promotes all, all the counties.
And so?
And we have tried to work with the city, but the council that you've got right now does not work with the county. But we're, we will, we will continue to try.
Well, I would encourage you to continue to try, that is
That's a two-way street, Ms. Meyer.
I understand.
We've had many, many meetings in my office.
I understand.
I've been to executive session, the city council.
I, I would continue to try.
Brian and I have stood before the city council, we have, so that's a two-way street, so I need to encourage.
I like to point out, it's, I like to point, it's not the mayor either.
No, no, she inherited the problem.
Well, I've been here 11 years, and been interested in the city ever, ever since I arrived, and it's just been an ongoing problem, and you blame, blame anyone.
Right.
I'm sure that there's people in the city that say the same thing as you, what you're saying, so.
And I realize this workshop doesn't have to do with what I'm about to talk about, but in all these interviews I see with the people around this year, the question is, what can the county do to work more with the city? The problem is, they don't know what the county has done, and how far we have tried and pushed, and pushed, and meetings we've set in on, meetings we've held, but they never mentioned that in those questions. They don't say what we've done, they only say what we need to do. That's, that's not correct.
That's a true politician, though.
It is a true politician. That's where my mouth gets me in trouble, yeah.
I know, mine too.
But anyhow, I apologize. Now, anything else on the hot tax, or?
Yes, I would just like to say that I did thank the commissioners for working with me, because when he says y'all have worked with me, and that's why I say I'm Switzerland, because my job is the entire tourism industry is on my head.
Right. And we do appreciate that. Well, if we don't have any more comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this workshop.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by Larry. All in favor?
Four.
Zero. Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you everybody for attending.